And welcome to the El Cornera Board Meeting. It is Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty five at six P M in the Susan Tully Lashley Boardroom of the eighteen eighty seven building. I'd like to stand and begin the evening by saying a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the legal, with liberty and justice for all.
Like call the meeting to order and Mr. Talan, will you take a roll call please?
Yes, Mr. Andre.
Here.
Eric Gordon.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mrs. Reckles is excuse. Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
Mrs. Vaughn.
Here.
Mr. Gribing.
Here.
And Ms. Kirk Coste.
Here.
Okay, this meeting has been noticed per state statute and I did not receive any cards for community participation tonight. So we will move on to our middle school student presentation.
That's us.
So we're presenting tonight on sixth grade intramurals. It was something that we started up last year. And then they're gonna share more specifics about it. Okay, so I'll try again real fast. So there was a student survey that we get every, that we present every year. To the students to kind of ask like, what would you like at E M S to add to the school day that might interest you?
Yeah, okay. So, like she said, the intermurals are based off from like a survey we took. And there were, there were a couple of weird answers, like a go-kart track on the roof so it can keep driving. So we obviously can't do that.
Yeah.
So we combined in the go-kart track on the roof and the video game club and made another like activity, Mario Kart. And then we couldn't do reptile club because she's terrified of the child. And intermurals is like a great way to meet, meet other kids and just like make new friends because. Because like all of us are coming from three schools and we only know like some of the kids that are in our school right now. So it's like a good way to make friends.
Yeah, great.
You have the blue sides?
Yes.
Well, our sixth year intramurals last year, because obviously this year we didn't have like the intermurals that, or the new sixth years. The intermurals were chosen off of a survey on which like sixth graders chose to see what they wanted to add to like the school and see what was interesting for them. And obviously because there was like only limited like sports for sixth grade, because they only had a lot of sports instead of like seventh and eighth grade. And we had an opportunity to build like new friendships and like meeting people by taking different sports and stuff and games and putting it all into one. And for sometimes the like some things don't work out for you, you can always skip the thing if you don't like it and then move to a different one.
Yeah, so each month we had a different activity where then, you know, students could decide, I really love Legos, but soccer's not my thing. So it's kind of a pick and choose type thing to get kids engaged. And then, like I said, they could decide, you know, I only want to do this one but not that one. And the amount of kids that decided that, hey, I might not love that activity, but I want to do it anyways. So kind of once they got involved in one, they kept going.
One of, so one of the intermural, intermurals was Lego, Lego intermural, Legos. Where we, we had like this thing of Legos where, and then oh, there were some challenges, like build the tallest tower that can stand on stone and make instru- make a musical instrument. And there were a lot of kids, well partnered up. And there was, there was so many of like, there were so many creative like designs. There were so many challenges, like three week, I think. So, three week. So, and they kind of helped people. Help people like, there were a lot of creative things. I'm pretty sure she had some, a lot of, like a couple of really creative Lego pieces in her room, at least until the end of the year.
Yeah, my office was displayed with all these Lego creations that they had. So they kind of decorated my office with the, the different creations that they created in this, this Lego challenge club.
Is being bad taught with cornhole hard with the ceiling height?
When we were throwing bags, some of them got stuck within the ceiling.
So we couldn't decide how many points it would be if you added in the ceiling then.
Problem solved.
Yeah. Whippleball was, I was just gonna ask what they're playing here. Oh, yeah. So we did Whippleball. We tried some golf too. The weather didn't cooperate. So then we did some like creative indoor golf courses. Couple months to Max that helped me set it up where we got creative in the gym. The gym was off limits for bags. We had to use the whole, the pod area. So, yeah. It added a little creative twist to it.
Uh, okay, so sixth grade like involvedness or something?
Involvement?
It decreased in two years ago to seventy nine percent where the seventh and eighth graders were ninety three percent. Because they had more like events and activities they could do. But once they added the intermurals for sixth grade last year, the sixth grade involvementness went all the way up, went eight, eight percent. Eight, seven percent, but the seven days grades stayed the same.
Yeah, so in total, we had sixty four students that participated in at least one intermural. Twenty nine students that did multiple intermurals. So again, once they tried one and then figured out their friends were doing the other ones, their connections they had made, they joined. And then we did add in Web Leaders to help facilitate too, so that they could build those connections with the sixth graders. So, you know, Web is the program where everybody belongs. We have eighth grade mentors. So today was a web day and the Web Leaders came into my classrooms and yeah, so they, they helped make it cool. So it wasn't just the associate principal running the games. They had a little dynamic that way. And we did partner with STEM Club as well. So they created these, you know, three D printed charms, like the Waka Thun charms. So for every activity they did, they got a charm to go with it too. So just a little added bonus. The kids love these. This card was super creative on the, the machine. This was probably one of my favorite ones, this Lego. Now there's one more slide.
Okay, so for me, intermurals gave me something to do after school. And like before intermurals, I didn't really have anything to do after school. I made new friends, even though we all came from different schools and we didn't really know each other. Some of the activities I didn't know, but intermurals taught me how to do some of these games and activities. My favorite one was bags and that's because it was my first game. And at that time, I didn't really know a lot of people. So this opportunity let me make new friends and meet new people.
For me, intermurals gave me an opportunity to talk to new people and meet new people while playing games that I love. My favorite games were bags because I got to play with it with some of my friends and sometimes she brought it stuck in the ceiling. My other favorites were, you know, you played golf and had really, and you got it really far and it was really fun.
For me, intermurals gave me an opportunity to meet other people from the other elementary schools. Because I didn't really know anyone. It was like the start of the year. I didn't know anyone from the other schools. But intermurals gave me a chance to meet new people from like Jack, the other elementary schools and gave me something to do after school. Uh, my favorite intermurals is probably bags. I didn't know how to play bags at the start of the year. And like the third class term, I think. But I caught on really quick. I also really liked Legos.
Yeah, so I think one of, just in a summary, one of the biggest things is when I go to transitioning from like elementary school to middle school. It's how are we gonna integrate the three middle schools? What about kids that are coming from one school and then now, you know, in classes with other students? So intermurals was a way to kind of, you know, talk to the families about ways that we can work on building those connections. And there's lots of years coming into middle school about not having the same class as one of my best friends. And, you know, how do we form those connections through common interests? So it ended up being, like I said, super successful this year. It is only for sixth graders, but they asked if they could join and I said, this went really well tonight, then they could be my seventh grade helpers. And we will be starting it up again next month. So I'm gonna continue the tradition. And again, basing off of those survey results and what kids, and not reptiles, obviously. But some of the more realistic survey results that came in, just to add that extra dynamic. Anybody got any questions?
It's just after school?
Yeah, so what I did was I, we picked four times after school, from three to four. Each month having a different activity. Again, I kind of pick your, pick your choices. You know, everything from like soccer to Mario Kart gaming. We hooked the Nintendo Switches up to the pods. And then they got to do it on the projector screens and we did like bracket style races and stuff like that. So.
How many days a week?
Um, it's four times a month. Got it. And then, yeah, each month then had a, a new activity where the kids would sign up and then. Yeah, like I said, a lot of them would be like, I didn't want to do ping pong, but then as soon as they joined that first time, they left it. So. So are there more than one thing that they can do each month? No, each month focuses on like one. Focus, got it. Yeah, so next month, we're gonna start with the Lego challenges and do the Mario Kart game. It was super successful. Ping pong, they went wild. So we're gonna keep some of the same ones from last year that were popular and then, yeah, get creative with some of the other ideas, but. Great, just great.
Yeah.
Wonderful. All right, so moving on to a, our middle school and high school improvement presentations.
We're gonna start with the high school one.
I do have extra, so you can have one.
Uh, before we start, veterans pay us on later tomorrow, we're elevated. Veterans look at their above eight, they'll probably get their about seven thirty kids. Yeah, they always, they always get there early. It's grown again, so it should be big and TMJ four may come. Glenn Boyd, a hundred year old World War II vet. We have a video of him and where he's talking, so it's just be pretty cool.
Yeah.
Starts at nine o'clock, the assembly?
All right, so our SIP plan, you guys are familiar with these documents, I know. Basically, when, when we get all of our data back in the summer, we look at it as, as an administrative team. Public some conclusions. Then we have in August, our school leadership team comes together and we meet for half a day. And the second half, we go to lunch. But the first half of the day, it's our department leaders, our school counselors, our interventionists. And our, our student services team. Most people get together, we, we go through everything and from that data, we start to formulate our school goals. Try to figure out some whys and hows and, and then we take that information to in-service with the full staff. But things of note on there, obviously you see our attendance has dipped. It's recorded differently this year than it has been in the past. So there, there was a dip there. Co-curricular participation went up. Oneology, two point eight GPA is going up, which we're, we're happy with. It's been a focus. Students are any C or higher in L H two, you can see it's at ninety percent, which that's one of the indicators for college readiness. Taking AP courses has dipped along with dual credit college classes. Our percent passing the AP, the kids that take the AP test do pretty well. Our A C T scores went up by about a half a point composite. We were at twenty one point eight, I'm sorry, twenty point eight, we're at composite twenty one, was our goal.
State average is nineteen point four.
Then our, our industry-based certification has gone up. Work-based experience has dipped. I believe they calculate what a work-based experience is differently. Questions on that before we get into the meat of it?
Also tend to be taken differently.
Yeah, I would add that question as well.
It was not calculating our medicals and now we calculate them all. So whether it's medical, ill, parent excuse, anything gets calculated. Prior to that, it wasn't calculating the medicals, anything, it wasn't coming against it. But how it's an actual true representation of who butts in seats every day, which is what we want. Uh, celebrations, these came out of.
I just wanted to point out a couple items as we look at, as I had asked, or look at those questions on the dual credit, the AP. One, the number of actual bodies in the high school is, or the these are just high school only numbers. They don't include C C and options.
Okay.
And so some of the dual credit dip and so forth could be attributed to some of the programs like Gateway Edge. Where those students, it's taken, they're still going over to the high school, but generally the courses they take at the high school are more of the elective in nature. We're taking a lot of those dual credit college classes over at Gateway. And also we're agnostic in those course offerings that we're creating and, you know, putting in the courses in alignment with what the student interests are and so forth. And as we've gotten more and more opportunities or different pathways for the kids to take, I think we've seen that, you know, the AP number really kind of hit a peak and start to come down a little bit as they've chosen some other pathways there, which is fine. I think when we first started tracking this, AP participation was around a hundred and ten. And we saw it go up really high. It's a, that's an extremely, when you look at sixty seven percent passing the AP exam, that's a very high passing rate. I believe national average is around fifty percent. It varies depending on which exam they're taking, but it falls in around fifty percent.
There's, there's other things with dual credit too. There's, there's a lot of reasons. Not, not all classes are offered every year.
Right.
Transcripted agreements go with the teacher. The guy in Gateway can either say it's okay or they can pull it. Some of them pulled, they'd say that the, the teacher who's teaching it isn't qualified to teach it. So they have pulled some, some back that way. Some of our teachers. Yeah, and, and some of our teachers are looking at, you can't do it all on trimester. So they're looking at what's, what's more important, trying to hit a hundred percent of the competencies of the Gateway class in order to transcript it. Or can they pull credentials out of it?
Yeah.
So like auto is in machining, they're starting to pull the credentials and going away from transcripting.
Sure.
There's just not enough time for them to get it all in.
Yeah.
But there's, there's choices that are made, but like Jason said, in the end, it's the kids that are gonna choose the classes and our, our full schedule is based off the student request. And I, I do believe that, I know that a lot of the kids that are taking the credits other places. You know, if you take, you take twenty five kids out of, out of a freshman class, a lot of those kids that are going over to those other programs would have been taking AP human. Which then kicks into AP US history. So you do see dips then, you know, sometimes a full section and it goes year by year. We looked at the why behind it quite a bit and, you know, it, it in the end, we want the kids taking what they, what they choose to take and, and do the best they can do within their pathways. The celebrations, like I said, the school leadership team came up with these. Our participation in co-curricular is at eighty eight percent is very, very high, very high school. I think that's got a lot to do with, you know, the support we get if we wanna, if the kid comes and wants to do a club. You know, if, as long as it's, we can do it, we do it. And try to pull some of those kids in that are otherwise not engaged. Industry record extra credentials are up to four hundred and sixty two, which is a very big number. We were happy with our A C T scores. Like I said, the goal was, was twenty one, so they didn't quite get there in summer. They missed it by two tenths. But.
Tell them what their incentive was.
I think you guys chose ice cream, right?
You should have rounded up.
We should have, but sorry. Twelve, twelve percent of our kids on a twenty eight percent or twenty eight or higher is, is pretty impressive.
Yeah.
And we're always looking at, I mean, you look at the kids, where, where you can get growth, you can get a lot of growth out of a twelve. It's hard to get a lot of growth out of a twenty eight. Um, they're just, you know, there's only so much room for them to grow and they're just as likely to sometimes they get up there to go down a point or up, is it there or go up a point? But we do focus a lot on, on the kids that are below seventeens and we'll get into that a little bit later. You kind of want to see that upper twenty eight or above and the, the below sixteen kind of balance out. And we're, we're getting pretty close. We did improve our attendance between try one and try three. That was the goal. And every year for the past, what, four or five years, we've been tracking our, our Latino students. And there's a, there's definitely a gap for the kids, for the kids that we're getting at two point, two point eight GPA. So we've been working towards that gap and it's improved every year. There's still a gap. But it's improving and it's still something that we're always gonna keep looking at. So our school-wide goals last year, our baseline was seventy eight percent of juniors, I'm sorry, seventy four percent of juniors had an A C T composite of, of a sixteen, so that was our baseline. Our goal was to hit eighty five percent on the real A C T and we did hit eighty five percent of our kids having above sixteen. The reasoning we chose sixteen, that's kind of the, the benchmark to get into the tech schools. And also if other criteria are met, they become eligible for the Gateway prowess, which, which can get them, you know, scholarships to go to Gateway. So it's, it's that number, that's that kind of minimum number that we want our kids to hit. We always track our Ds and Fs and I think sometimes people don't like that goal, but I like that goal a lot. Because a lot of our goals are really ambiguous and what can you as an individual do to hit that goal? You know, everybody has their piece on A C T, but you don't even find out until the next year.
Yeah.
You can look at your grade book every day and you can see what gives, what, what your grade, what grades your kids have and how many kids have Ds and Fs. And then you can make plans with those kids. And you can have a, a big impact on everything that's that we're doing despite, despite paying attention to that. You can see our, our Latino Hispanic students, so the two point eight or higher, fifty two percent. And we, we got it to fifty six percent. Our goal was fifty eight. We didn't meet our goal, but we continue to make progress towards it. That's a hard, that's a hard move because as the kids get into school, once they pass their freshman year, their cumulative GPA adds up. It's hard to change your GPA. So if you start, if you start low by the time you're a junior and senior, it's, it's, it doesn't move up quite as quickly as it does when you're a freshman.
Can you explain why I'm not, I'm sure you understand why this one's marked in red?
Because we didn't hit our goal. We didn't hit the goal.
Percent of the students.
We wanted to get, they wanted, the goal was ninety.
Oh, ninety, okay.
Yeah, we didn't hit it.
Yeah. We had eighty three, okay.
Yeah.
We went up, I'm not fine.
Yeah, not, not the numbers we wanted. So our school-wide goals this year after we came back and, and and we, we gave them two goals that we really wanted and we gave them the choice of focusing on those two or bringing a third one in. And everybody in the team decided if we could focus on these two goals, do a really good job, the third one's gonna naturally go up. But moved it to ninety percent of our students having an A C T composite sixteen or higher, stretch ball. It's, it's a, it's tough, but I think we're not far off. You know, we're, we're not far off of it. Our rigor goal, we're looking at ninety percent of our kids having no, no, no grades lower than a C minus in each trimester. So we're getting to the point here in a couple of weeks, we'll see how we did for try one. Yeah, but there's a lot more to just the grades. It's the action Brian Sebastian talked about, but there's the things that kick into it that I think make that goal really valuable.
So we work with the school leadership team to figure out what the action steps are going to be over the course of the school year. These have been our non-negotiables for the last, I'm sure you've seen them before, a last several years. Because if we keep continuing to do this work, that's going to have an impact on reaching what those goals are. So I'm gonna throw some alphabet soup at you, but I will explain it. So G R S for a half an hour per week is still going to be one of our priorities. G R S stands for Guaranteed Recovery System, meaning that we're asking our teachers one time per week for a half an hour to go back and reteach what the students missed, what they didn't get, making sure that our students are getting those essential skills that we've identified so that we keep our kids at grade level. Um, we're also asking our teachers to make sure that they're meeting one time a week in their E L Cs, which stands for Elkhorn Learning Community. So anybody who teaches the same classes are getting together and making sure that the learning targets are the same, that the summative assessments are the same. And so that all students have that same experience and we can ensure that the skills are being taught no matter what teacher that they get. Um, and then we also have that continuous focus on high performing student relationships, making sure that we're providing enough care and press for all students. So having high expectation for all kids, showing kids that we care about them not only as students, but also as individuals and people. So continuing to work on those relationships, making sure that we're providing options within our lessons for U D L, which stands for Universal Design for Learning. So we want to have multiple different pathways for students to be able to learn the information that the teachers are teaching and have choice in what the, what that might be. And also different opportunities to choose how they can show what they've learned as well. And then the last piece is making sure that our S S T, which stands for Student Success Time, which happens every Tuesday, that all of our students are getting those lessons that are happening during that time that mainly focus around academic and career planning. So that all of our students are thinking about what that career pathway is going to be for them. Aligning their courses to that, those types of things. So if we keep those non-negotiables in place, these are the goals that the school leadership teams thought of to try to reach what those, what those goals are going to be for the school year. We're gonna step away from some traditional practices that we've done in the past. In the past, we have only provided test prep for our students who are below a sixteen. When we test the students during Readiness Day. But we've decided that we really think all kids could benefit from getting a test prep. And so specifically what that's going to look like is one day per week prior to the A C T, eight weeks before that. We'll have class meetings where the students will hear about why they take the A C T, what the benefits are, how they can personally benefit from it. I know specifically, like my children benefited from scores that they got on their A C T because they went to schools that provided scholarships because they got a certain composite score. So we're teaching kids those types of things so that they know about the incentives, why we take this, those types of things. And then also providing them with test-taking strategies. A lot of the A C T is knowing how to, well, for lack of a better word, game the test, right? What is it that you need to do on this test to be able to? What is it that you need to do on this test to be able to um get rid of distractors? What is it to make sure that you're um. Maximizing the time that you have, um, and that you're not wasting time on things that you don't know. Just those types of little tips and tricks that'll help you with each specific part of that ACT so that all kids can feel like they're prepared, not just the kids who. Um, are below that sixteen composite score. We wanna continue to provide the full ACT for students to take, um. So they can get that practice. We've always done that um after school where kids can. Not only get the readiness day practice, but they can also come in and, and do practice ACTs, the full ones. Still wanna provide that opportunity. We still want the kids to pick an incentive, Mr. Peel. But twenty one will be the, will, will be the goal that they'll have to reach to get that. Who knows what the juniors will pick this year? Maybe it will be pizza, maybe it will be ice cream. We don't know what they're gonna decide, but they get to pick what that's going to be. Um, and then additionally, um, as I'm sure you know, we have embedded the ACT skills into the curriculum. So our kids are constantly getting practice on their summative assessments with item types that they would see on the ACT. Um, but we wanted to provide some additional classroom practice because we got a hold of a tool called Progress Learning this year. Um, the company that we use to do the readiness day testing where we get some baseline data on where the kids are at with pre-ACT and with ACT. They've merged with another company and they now have some tools that we can use. Um, specifically tools for um prepping students for the ACT. So. Um, we met with the core and the elective teachers and department leaders and talked about what are some. Tools and strategies that you would like to use that this program has. And what our core teachers have decided to do was to use a study plan feature that's in the system that. Basically what happens is the students take the diagnostic test during readiness day. It gives them a composite score. Um, on the ACT and then any gap areas that they have, it provides lessons for them. Um, and additional practice to build those gap areas. So our core teachers will be embedding those study. Uh, study plan, um, lessons into their course one time per week for students to work on, no longer than fifteen minutes at a time. Um, and then our elective teachers, they're all disciplinary literacy teachers, no matter if you teach welding or you teach PE. Or whatever it is that you teach. So making sure that they're embedding skills practice, um, if they're going to be. Um, giving an article to students, that article would have comprehension questions that kids would see on the ACT or on the pre-ACT. So they can practice those skills with the um content of that particular course. And that would happen at least four times per trimester. Okay.
One thing about ACT is. All of our stuff is gonna be a little skewed now because ACT just the game again. Um, they shorten the test. They're asked, they're gonna give more time per question. Um, they changed how they're gonna score the composite. Um, science is optional and not stored in the composite anymore. Science and math is a STEM score now. So how?
Yeah.
It's gonna be tough, it's gonna be tough to compare last year's store to this year's store, um, because of those changes, but. I, I think some of the changes are good. I don't like, as a former science teacher, making that option.
Yeah.
State did not make it optional because they're state tests, so all of our kids have to take it.
It is nice that it isn't so long though. That's a long time for students, so. How do you um motivate kids who know for sure they're not going on to a higher education?
You, you try to.
Situation.
You try to talk to them about, you never know what the future is gonna hold. You know, some kids are, I'm gonna go to the trades.
Yeah.
Your boss may send you back to school someday.
Sure.
And if you hit that sixteen or higher, you'll, you'll qualify. You're not gonna have to go take the placement test. You know, it can save you time and money in the future.
Yeah.
Um, so there's, there's a lot of group conversations and then there's a lot of individual conversations that happen with kids. And there's some kids, there's a few that'll opt out, that they know they're not gonna take it. A parent can opt them out.
Yeah.
Um, we don't ever encourage that.
Right.
Um, but it, it does happen.
Sure.
And so.
But when you see the skills that are on the ACT and like, if you can, like, if Austin Thorson can pull out skills. That kids need in autos that are also being measured on that ACT and you can point that out to students that there's all parts of. Any type of particular career pathway that you choose that you're going to need to have these skills for. So it's not just a. Tool that colleges are using, but you're really trying to make sure that you're growing the skills that you need for whatever pathway you're choosing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think part two is getting away from calling everything ACT prep.
Yes.
You know, cause, cause any, anytime.
Yes.
You use that, if it's not your gap teaching of the test, you're teaching of the skill, and if you look at what the skills are, the skills are valid. You know, and so I think anytime it's embedded into the content, which is what we try to do as much as we can. And we're like, you know, we're not, we're not gonna do ACT prep today. We might be doing a interpretation of data. Or, or something like that where you, you kind of change the focus and, and build it into what you do and they're, they're getting prep and they don't really know it.
Yeah.
And, and if the kids say, well, I'm just going into the trades or I'm going this route, I'm not, you're going to the trades, just about, all of them require ongoing schooling.
Yes.
And they did a study years ago on the readability of texts within high schools. And the tech ed department had the highest Lexile books in all the school, which means they were the most difficult. To read, comprehend and understand. Technical manuals.
Yeah.
And so it is a very, I think that's why a lot of people look at directions and pay out, you know, try to skip it. But it's, so it's a very high level, very high skills that the kids need to have.
Yeah.
Going into those careers. And so it's important to, to develop that. I do think from a statewide level, we'll probably see, we may see a little bit more inflation of the. ACT scores and or the test scores because there's no longer a penalty for opting out. So schools don't get penalized on their state report card if students.
That's what I was gonna ask is.
Yeah, so that's gone away. They'll report a only X percent. You know, X percent didn't, you know, opted out to take the test, but it won't reduce their.
Oh.
Score.
It used, it used to give you, what, give you a five percent?
Right.
Like five percent, over five percent, then you get that.
Five point deduction.
Yeah, it was a deduction.
Okay.
That's gone now.
You know, it, it was hard, it was hard a couple of years ago to get all, a lot of the kids motivated because a lot of the colleges after COVID went away from requiring it.
Yes.
Um, but there was a time when I was kind of wondering if it was gonna go away, but it's the kind of, a lot of the colleges that.
Are colleges still kind of leaning more on the ACT than the SAT or is the SAT? Yeah.
Eastern Spokes is ACT.
Okay.
And even Illinois State Test is not ACT, but.
Okay.
I think they, they go either way.
But all colleges will accept the ACT? Or if you're a student and say you wanna.
You may have to take the.
Yeah, okay. Um, sorry, any other questions? You saving it?
Well, I'm waiting till you, till you go through.
Oh, you got one for this one?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Alright, so um our goal number two around the DNF data. Um, some of the action steps that the school leadership team came up with were um making sure that um we're checking in with students. Um, during independent work time and just talking to them about what they're missing. Um, you know, maybe uh retakes that we might want to try to um get them to complete those types of things. Um, making sure that we're enforcing our cell phone policy and that we're following that policy, that students aren't distracted. Um, one of the things that we saw was that um kids were. Teachers were following the policy, but kids were asking to go to the bathroom or to the. Try to get something from their locker and then taking their phones with them and then using that time um to get on social media or to. Um, contact friends and those types of things. So. Um, anyway, we want them to be leaving their phone behind after leaving the classroom because that just kind of minimizes those distractions, distractions during the school day as much as we possibly can. Um, making sure that we are communicating with parents, especially if students are not doing so well in classes, um, and calling home with positive news as well. Um, using our students of concern process with fidelity, um, we wanna make sure that we are um letting. Um, our students of concern team know that there are students that are getting Ds and Fs because then they can see if that student is getting multiple Ds and Fs. Um, in other classes and then that's how we're able to put students into. Um, some intervention supports for them, like being in an academic study hall or being in a structured study hall. So they can get extra help during that time to be able to boost up their grades. Um, and then just making sure that staff have some reminders and some PD um around state changes. And making sure that we're switching things up for students, um, to keep them engaged at least every fifteen minutes. Um, and movement breaks during those seventy three minute class periods. Um, we did notice in our data that our male students seem to be lagging behind our female students in pretty much all areas. Um, so what is it that we can do to help um with male student engagement um in the classroom? Um, so we're gonna do some research as a school leadership team to see if there is some strategies that we can find that maybe will help with that. Um, and then we wanna do some continued PD on using securely. Securely allows our teachers to be able to. See what students are doing on their Chromebooks and to be able to shut down if they're in tabs. That they shouldn't be while they're working on things to just keep them focused and engaged in what they're supposed to be working on. Um, our kids are getting clever. They're bringing in their own personal devices because then they don't have to be on securely, so making sure that we're cracking down on that as well. So. Question?
Well, not a question. I just, the research on the male student engagement has been a problem for decades. And I'm glad you're addressing it.
Yeah, yeah. I think um we, we found some interesting TED Talks, but none of them seem to have solutions.
Their solutions.
Yeah.
The solutions that were on the last one was males should start school a year later than females, which. Not really gonna work at this point when you're in high school.
Yeah, right, helpful.
There was one other one that was kind of just.
Yeah. I mean, there is truth to that, especially when the male is a young man in the class. There's absolute truth to that, but like you said, how do you address that once they're, no?
That's something we can.
Do a little. We have them all retrograde for you.
Yeah. Yep.
Ratchet them, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright.
Richard, all your app.
Um, and this is just, it's not any action steps that go along with any of our schoolwide goals, but it does go along with. Taking a look at our data and seeing some other areas that we really need to improve upon. Um, so one of the things that we're also really. Um, just carving out some time for to ensure that we can kind of address some of the data that we have seen. Um, we did see that dip, if you look in that dual credit di- data, the dip in our percent of students taking college credits and taking AP courses. And so, um, we spent some time the last um few months digging in with our departments. And asking them how they can embed more opportunities for students to take. Um, dual credits, specifically transcripted credits or AP courses that could get added to their scope and sequence to provide students with more opportunities. To hit those six components of readiness. Um, and then also opportunities for students to be able to build in IRCs. So we have some stuff that's gonna be coming down the pike, which is really kind of exciting. Um, we have new courses being proposed in social studies. Um, different opportunities in tech ed and business for industry-recognized credentials. Egg, egg will have some potential transcripted credits. Um, so we're hoping to get those um rolling for course registration uh for next year, so. IRC. Oh, industry-recognized credential, sorry, I really.
They, they just, they wanted, we wanted to look over everything they do. They looked over the list of credentials and. You know, what, are there, is there any low hanging fruit out there that, that you can grab for kids and.
Yeah.
Really embed within your content, like we were tricking them about completely revamping things.
Yeah.
They had some pretty creative ideas and.
Yeah.
And uh, you know, we have, we brought in comp one for English, which is a gateway. English class that should transfer to any of the state schools as their introductory English class. Um, Dana Straw is getting her masters in anatomy and phys. So she'll mouth it, she'll then be able to transcript anatomy and physiology classes and possibly even some bio classes.
Which is so rare.
But you have to have the master's degree in the content area for science still in order to do that.
Yeah.
Um, Gateway's lightened up a little bit in some other areas, so our teachers made it a little easier for our teachers to transcript. Um, psych will be transcribed and probably as soon as, one of the things is you have to have five years teaching the course, teaching the AP course. Um, so as soon as Amy Schneider has her five years in teaching AP psych, should be able to start transcripting some of their courses, so.
She three years in?
I think she's two years and a third year, I think. So there's, there's a lot of things that are, you know, still in play that for, that we can get for our kids.
But things to just stay on top of and keep kind of continuously looking at so we can continue to make those opportunities for students. So that's it. Great.
I would add, the year, the high schools industry-based credentials, it was shared recently that is. The number completed is number one in the entire state of Wisconsin.
Yep.
And their dual credit course numbers, even with that dip down, that number will still be number one in the entire state of Wisconsin. Out of, I believe there's over five hundred high schools in the state. So.
Wow.
Good work, it's quite good.
Yeah. For sure.
And people say it's because of Gateways and Alphorn, but we're higher than Kenosha schools put together and we're higher than received schools put together.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so.
And our school report card, we can't release the numbers yet, but going out the last years and this year's is even better. Um, we're the highest rated high school in Rock Walworth, receiving Kenosha County as well.
Wow.
Yeah, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now it's my turn to our middle school. Oh, thank you. I'm so glad your staff throws out, cause. Hey. So same process at our middle school that we use at the high school. Um, our school leadership team gets together in the summer, takes a look at all of the data. Um, and as we're taking a look at all of the data, we're trying to figure out what our goals are going to be. Our school leadership team is comprised of representation from um each of the teams and then each of the departments. As well as um our student services, um, and our interventionists as well. So it's a big group of. It's a, it's a big group of humans. So anyway, we really dig into the data, um, we take a look um at how we're doing. And see if there's some opportunities for changes in our goals. Um. Some of the celebrations that um we were able to pick out as a school leadership team. Um, ninety five percent of our students met grade level expectations um for our expectation grades, which are the, our behavior grades. Um, being respectful, being responsible, being productive. Um, every kid gets a, those three grades um in every course. Um, so that's huge that um ninety five percent of our students met grade level expectations for that. Um, seventy one percent of our students were proficient or higher on the social studies forward exam. That was one of our highest. Um, proficiency scores on the forward test, two years running for our social studies department, so they're celebrating that. Um, ninety three percent co-curricular participation, specifically in eighth grade. Um, that's pretty high percent of students being involved and Nicole spoke um to that and from the sixth grade level. But you were able to kind of see that data overall in the middle school. Um, for the first time since COVID, our achievement scores in math and ELA are above the state average on the forward exam, so that's huge. We had been um progressively moving up with our achievement scores little by little since COVID. Um, and now um getting uh over top of that state average, so we're excited to see that both happening. Um, and then fifty nine percent of our eighth grade students met their math growth goals for I-Ready. Which I wanna celebrate our, um, our eighth grade math team just a little bit. They had the highest growth rate. And the winter I-Ready scores as well last year in the district, so that was super exciting. Cause we're able to kind of see all grade levels, so not just at the middle school. So they were bragging about that. Alright, um, moving on. Uh, when we take a look at what we decided to do for our school-wide goals, um, our goals have not um changed. As far as our rigor and our responsiveness goals for the last, well, you can see several years here. We're really trying to continuously move those um goals up, up, up and up. Um, and they're not quite where we want them to be, where we could change the goal just yet. So if you look at where we were at last year, um, in twenty four, twenty five. Um, our goal of students uh meeting projected proficiency in reading. Um, making sure that we have proficient readers is what we're looking for. We use the I-Ready to be able to measure that. Um, because we're able to get a dipstick on students more times per year than what we would if we just use the forward for that. Um, so we're looking for sixty percent of our students this year to. Um, so we're looking for sixty percent of our students this year to um hit projected proficiency. Last year in the spring, our iReady scores were at fifty-eight percent of our students um having projected proficiency in reading on the forward test. And I'll tell you how close it is to actually predicting this correctly. I already said that our kids, that fifty-eight percent of them would be proficient on the forward test. Fifty-seven point eight percent of our kids were proficient on the forward test, how close is that? Like that is, so we're like really happy with how the results are um lining up with uh iReady and with forward testing. Um, our second goal is for students to be able to meet their growth role goals in math and in reading on iReady. Um, if you look at where we were, where we were at last year, fifty-three percent of our students put their growth goals in math, math and fifty-six percent hit those in reading, um, which is where we came up with kind of the fifty-seven, because we're trying to average those two together, if that makes sense. Um, and fifty-seven percent is what the national average is for students at middle school to be able to hit their growth goals. So we really wanna get to that benchmark, and if you look over time, there's, there's been a steady increase, and so it would really be nice to hit that um, national metric. Um, so that's what we're shooting for this year. And then um we did change our relationship goal, do you wanna talk about that one?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, um, so really, well, so we've been working on the relationship chart, which is key, as we all know, right? Um, that's where if they feel like they belong, that's where all the growing is gonna become anyways, right? So we shifted from making sure they felt like they had the trust of adults, especially with that sixth grade bunch coming in and everyone feel like they were connected to the school. And then we raised it to um last year to the expectations, we developed that rubric for everybody to follow. And nine percent knocked out of the park. Now we're starting to go that one step further, right, we're trying to develop that the emotional regulation, right, that resiliency and that self advocacy part that they need to have taken that step into high school. And so we wanna take, break that down, get those action steps. We took that um self-assessment, that's where we felt that's where the kids were pretty much lacking the most. And needed those, those key skills in order to go up, and so that's where we were, so.
Yeah, our school leadership team identified this from the needs assessment that the students took at the beginning of the school year. And twenty-one percent of our kids said they want to, they need to work on those skills and they rated themselves. In yes, areas.
I mean, that's, that's where they said, like, that's where you need it, and so we broke it down with it.
Just ask a question on that.
Thanks.
Um, maybe you mentioned it, I wasn't paying attention, but why did we move from math to iReady?
Oh yeah, we switched um the, let's see, this is our second year with iReady now. Um, and we switched that because it was more aligned with the forward test.
Okay.
Yep, and like, like I was saying before, it was, I mean, it's pretty spot on right now, the standards are aligned with the forward test. Um, and it also had a component that um math did not have, which is the ability for us to be able to have the students not only take the test, but then it has um pathways for students to be able to practice where their gather areas are at over the course of the school year.
Map had a partnership with Odyssey Learning that we had purchased years ago. And we purchased a lifetime license for it, but you still had a renewal fee every year for the licensing. And they hadn't kept up with those learning activities very well, and so they became outdated. And iReady suite, the, the team that reviewed it felt was much stronger, more up to date and relevant.
Alright, so our action steps um for making sure that all of our skids, students all of our students um are meeting their reading proficiency goals. Um, we are really gonna continue a lot of the work that we have been doing, um, because we don't want to kind of lose ground, we keep growing. And so we wanna continue to improve upon those practices, um, and then kind of gradually add little pieces. So you'll see the word continue there, these are all things that we were doing last year. Um, but the one thing that really kind of has changed um, is that we're really kind of focusing on, um, well, first of all, let me just kind of in a nutshell say what we were doing before. In a nutshell, what we were doing before that we wanna continue to do is make sure that our um learning targets align to um, our forward test, so making sure that we're measuring how kids are going to be tested on that test. Secondly, we wanna make sure that our assessments are aligned to the forward test as well, we wanna make sure that the rigor level of our test is aligned. And that also the item types that students are being asked, they're getting practiced with that on their summative assessments. Um, and then everybody kind of shares that load of being a reading teacher, not just the ELA teachers. So there's that disciplinary literacy that's happening in the allied arts, and it's happening um in science and in social studies, so we wanna continue um, to um practice those skills in those areas as well. Um, so then we also wanna make sure that our students are um using their um their MyPath lessons that are on iReady so that they're getting that targeted growth. Thirty minutes per week, just like A- Amy talked about last week or two weeks ago. Um, we do the same thing at the middle school that the elementary school does with the iReady lessons. So what is new this year is that we have new supplementary materials in ELA um, that our students are using, um, where we are making sure that we're different, we have our reading comprehension lessons. Um, we really wanna meet students where they're at, and so those reading comprehension lessons um, are tied to um students' iReady scores. So student takes that diagnostic in the fall and it will tell our teachers exactly where they are with a reading comprehension skill. And so when the teachers are going to teach that skill in the classroom, we have some guided instruction where this is an I do the skill, right? Then we have some guided practice, which is where we're gonna have the kids doing the, you know, the kind of you do, or I'm sorry, the we do, yep. And then we get into the independent practice where you have the you do. We don't wanna send kids off into the wilderness alone, even after they've kind of practiced it together. So this is where we want teachers to be differentiating the lessons. And so what they'll do is the kids who are in this red area, um, or orange area right here. Those students showed that they are um at least two grade levels below in this particular skill area. And so what the teachers are gonna do is pull those students into a small group. And they're gonna do a scaffolded lesson with those students before they do that independent practice. So that, that those kids can get some guided um lessons that are below grade level that are gonna help them get to grade levels, so they can do that into practice, independent practice by themselves. The students who are in this yellow area right here, those students are going to probably do some collaborative practice while those students are working with the teacher. And the students who are gonna be over here in the green, they're ready to go already, that green means go. They already have this skill, they're ready to do that independent practice like right now by themselves. So once our students get that scaffolded lesson, then they're ready to try to do that independent practice by themselves. At that point in time, the teacher will switch off and work with those students that are in that yellow group. They'll do some more guided practice with those students so that, that, then they're ready to do that independent practice. And then once that lesson happens, we're gonna have an opportunity to be able to stretch these kids in the green. And so those kids will have a lesson after that with the teacher that does a stretch lesson and extends their skill beyond that.
This stuff also allows our specials, our interventionists, our special ed teachers to stay in the classroom. And they switch off. Doesn't mean that they're always taking the rider of the orange group, right? Sometimes that classroom teacher is working with that lower group. And the special ed teacher is actually able to be with that yellow group or whatever, so that the content master is actually work with that lower group. So it, everyone's able to stay in that same classroom, no one's getting pulled out, getting saved, something else, they're all same in that classroom, so it helps.
It also provides the opportunity for our students to work on those MyPath lessons as well when they're not doing the independent practice. So. Um, action steps for meeting our growth goals, we're gonna again continue some work and then try some, some new things. So, um, we're gonna continue doing goal setting for iReady and conferring with students on that. We wanna make sure that our students are um getting their SDI and that we're progress monitoring for those goals for our students with IEPs. We're gonna continue to differentiate the learning through our workshop model and small groups, what I was just talking about. Um, but doing that in math as well, um, and in other areas as often as we possibly can. And then really the big piece here for this year is adjusting to a seventy-three minute schedule. Or a, a five period day, seventy-three minutes in the classroom, like we, that's a wonderful tool for us to have that added time in certain areas, um, but it is an adjustment to be able to adjust from fifteen minutes to seventy-three minutes. There's a lot of content that has had to change. Um, there is a lot of ways that we teach that have to change. And so the things that we've been talking about really are making sure that we're not doing anything for more than fifteen minutes at a time. So that we can keep that focused attention of a student and keep them engaged, um, so making sure that we're switching things up. Um, so we've been doing some professional development around that and how do you adjust to that seventy-three minute period. Unlike the high school who had an entire year to prepare for a change, um, we have had to do it like that. So making sure that we're giving the supports and, I mean, not only that, but we are having to change entire systems that we had in place. Um, so there's a lot of work with the school leadership team and how to make everything fit um underneath that new five period day.
And lives this year. And come back and.
Yeah.
You know, the recommendations or what worked well.
Yes, so we're, um, the school leadership team has really been really uh instrumental in making, giving us the feedback that we need. Um, and coming up with solutions for the things that aren't working or that we need to continue doing um, within that, the construct of that five period day. So little by little, like we've just made a few adjustments. Um, moving our PST meetings to Mondays every week instead of having them every two weeks. Things that aren't working, we just keep tweaking.
Yep.
How do you feel the students are adjusting?
They love it.
Why?
Yeah, do they give reviews?
Well, I think.
Have you done a survey or something?
No, it's anecdotal for the kids, yeah.
Less changes.
Sure.
Less in their plates. Right, less, less, less um, what to remember, um, more time to do work in the classes, right? Um, I think they can just, they feel like they dive deeper into things, right? And it's just.
They don't feel like they're on the hamster wheel.
Nope.
Instead of the constant changing every fifteen minutes and this is just slow the.
Good. Yeah, so it's good here. Some of us, as former members, received some initial feedback like the first couple of weeks. I think it was a part of the adjustment.
It was.
Um, for everybody, you know, and my response simply was let's give this some time. We don't, we don't evaluate our kids after two weeks, you know, in the classroom. So let's, let's give this time to work itself out and evaluate it at the end of the year, and then we'll see, you know, where the adjustments need to be made.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
I can tell you that um my daughter is in seventh.
Yeah.
And it's exactly what they said, she gets the instruction.
Yeah.
And then she gets the time in the classroom to review if any things, if she's not getting.
Yeah.
She loves it, so.
Good.
That's awesome to hear.
That's great.
My son who's in seventh grade is adjusting, he's a little wider and I don't care, but uh I think it's, I think it's great, this is not something that we granted for the middle school, it's a new concept to them, but
Right.
We've had the five hour day trimester for over a decade in the high school, we've seen the tremendous gains and results that they've had in the transformational um, things that we've been able to do over at the high school, not solely because of, but that's one component, one tool that we saw, and I think immediate um noticeable differences is what's it done to your disciplinary referrals.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, they're.
That's awesome.
I mean, it's simple math, the kids in middle school get in trouble during passing time, there's less passing time. It's, it's, you know, and, and that ability to not be on that hamster wheel, that going, I've always thought why do we take our, our group of students for the least organized, the least able to plan ahead? The least capable of staying on top of that and give them the most classes in the day of any age level that we have and expect them to get that and be successful and stay on top of it. And so, yeah, I, I'm excited, granted, we had to do it because.
We were forced to.
Uh, forced to from that, so I don't know, there's not like, whether you like it or not, I don't know.
But I, but I think the board was
Yeah.
knowing the successes that we've seen at the high school, I think that's why the board was comfortable moving in that direction.
Yeah.
When that was presented to us, so.
And there's a change of mindset that hasn't happened.
Absolutely.
And that does take a while, even though that high school had a year to prepare. Until you're actually teaching it.
Yeah.
Really weighing it.
Yeah.
Really have to work things out then, you can't prepare for that, something.
No, no.
Yeah, we're doing it.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, I mean, there's still wrinkles. We just keep, we just, every month, we just.
Yeah, and I'm sure there are some kids that will be asked now, that'd say, yeah, I don't like it, it's one time.
My source is a sixth grader, so it doesn't, I have no.
No cream of preference.
And next year she'll say, I love it because that's what it was last year.
Yeah.
It's a change for them a little bit, right? Sixth grader's coming in, it's way different than elementary school, but we're, we're, we're.
They're changing it different from a different perspective.
Yeah.
I'd be interested in is reevaluate next year's freshmen and see if this had effect going to the high school. I, I'd really.
That's a good point, it's always a huge adjustment for the kids.
Yeah, I know there'll be less of one.
Yeah.
I'd like to see if it had an effect.
Yeah.
Moving to high school.
Yeah, what, what, what the benchmark is to measure by.
Those are the conversations that are had.
And I would bet that our sixth graders, this is less of an adjustment for them, going from elementary to a five hour day. They're going from elementary to a seven or an eight hour day. Because they're in their elementary classes from the prolonged periods.
Sure.
Before they shift to their specials. Once or twice a day. What's that?
And that lead then to this last part with this, just with these, this is the, this is the other stuff, this is with that last goal on relationships and building that, that resilience and that like, um the next part with the, like, the biggest one is like the coaching of students, right? On when to be a self-advocate, when to solve problems independently, when to seek that support. That's one of the bigger steps that we're facing right now, so are discipline referrals down, yes, right? I would say definitely they're down, but now it's teaching our students on when to use like safe hooks. When to contact that, that teacher, right, that teacher. Um, and when do, you know, when to talk with, with your, you know, with um friends, it's that friend drama. Right, that they start seeing now, because you now had, I had my posse from West Side, I had my posse from Jackson, right? And, and Tibbetts, and now it's all conglomerate, all together. And it's like, oh my goodness, like my best friend isn't quite my best friend anymore, because now she's hanging out with people that she played soccer with or whatever. You know what I mean? And now you see all that going on and all that, the rumor mill and stuff. And it's like navigating that, that's what you feel like you do, like you now wear a different hat, it's not the disciplinary and it's not like the counselor, right? And so like.
How do I solve that? What's in your school?
I'm not saying that at all, I'm not saying that at all.
That's all to speak the same language and stuff, and I think it'll help, so. Anyways. Moving on.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it, that's it.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry if that's a little off track there, but.
No.
Okay. Moving on to the approval of our school board minutes from October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
I will approve the minutes by October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five regular, so it was school board meeting as of November.
Second.
Alright, so moving second to approve the minutes of the October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five regular, so there's a school board meeting. Oh no, uh, roll call vote please.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Eric Gordon.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Kostak.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Griebing.
Yes.
And Ms. Kropowski.
Okay, motion passes, uh general and other fund bills, Mr. Earl.
The business office offers for approval of the following US bank check numbers, one five five seven zero zero and one five five seven zero one. BMO check numbers, one six zero eight one six to one six zero nine one eight, wire numbers five eight one to five eight five. ACH numbers three two zero to three five six for a total of three hundred and twenty-one thousand forty-one dollars ninety-four cents. Any questions?
I understand the one and I, we already touched this.
Yeah. Alright, okay, so looking for a motion to approve.
I'll, I'll move to approve the general and other fund bills of November tenth, twenty twenty-five, US bank check numbers. One five five seven hundred to one five five seven one, BMO check numbers, one six zero eight one six. To one six oh nine one eight, wire numbers five eight one to five eight five and ACH numbers three two zero three five six. And the combined amount of three hundred and twenty-one thousand forty-one dollars ninety-four cents as presented.
I'll second it.
It's by moving second, seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of November tenth, twenty twenty-five, US bank check numbers, one five five seven hundred. To one five five seven one, BMO check numbers, one six zero eight one six to one six zero nine one eight. Wire numbers five eight one to five eight five and ACH numbers three two zero to three five six and the combined amount of three hundred and twenty-one thousand forty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Eric Gordon.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Griebing.
Yes.
Ms. Kropowski.
Yes.
Alright, motion passes. Moving on to our health insurance proposal. Taylor is gonna get one and. Present stuff to us.
Also Scott online.
Okay, Scott's online.
Hopefully.
Scott Feller, are you online? In here.
Alright.
So for those who don't know Scott, Scott is our benefit consultant from USI Insurance Services. So he's been with us a number of years and so we've been working very closely with him. Over the last few months to determine what does this twenty twenty-six health plan look like. So he's gonna take us through just some. Financial reporting from the last two years. We're gonna talk about what that renewal projection was, if we would have done absolutely nothing. And then we have a recommended, two recommended options for twenty twenty-six. And then um some additional savings opportunities, so. We're gonna let Scott kind of lead us through this presentation.
Uh, thank you. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so we're gonna start by just giving you um brief historical view of what's transpired since we made the move from fully insured. To self-funding back in um January of two thousand twenty-four. This slide has really um four columns on it, two thousand twenty-three. Um, is the year, the last year you were fully insured um with Humana and we made the change um to the current. Uh, plan design um with Amps, Lucent and Drexie. Um, in two thousand twenty-three, the premiums um that were um scheduled to be paid for the entire year were five point five. Five-two million. Um, the actual claims for that year were six million twenty thousand, um the first row net paid claims. Um, the first year we went fully insured, um the total claim spend was three point nine million. The overall total spend was just under five point two million at five point one eight six. On a budget of five point eight million. Um. Which meant we ran at an eighty-nine percent loss ratio or an eighty-nine percent um eighty-nine percent of budget. We, we ended up um spending about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars less than what we spent in two thousand. Twenty-three. So, first year, we would expect um to have some surplus uh based upon the fact that the year's immature. Uh, claims that were incurred at the end of twenty-three were the responsibility of Humana, not the self-funded plan. All in all, things ran pretty well in two thousand uh twenty-four. If we move ahead to two thousand twenty-five and compare that to two thousand twenty-four. Um, we can see things um ramped up a little bit. We were a mature year. Um, and this is data through Sep- September of twenty-five, so you'll see the twenty-four column. Twenty-five year to date and then our projection for um the full two thousand twenty-five year. Um. So at the four point seven million of claims, we're up about twenty-one percent from two thousand twenty-four. But we are still below the six million um that was spent in two thousand twenty-three. Um, actual net cost is projected to be about six point two million, that's up twenty-one percent from last year. But it's only up about nine percent from two thousand and um twenty-three. All, all of this put together, um loss ratio is, or the amount over budget is about eight point eight percent. Um, I do, since this was printed, have an update, October was actually the best year, uh month of two thousand and twenty-five. So with, when we add October to this, um you'll see that it's about a hundred and five percent loss ratio. So we picked up about three, little over three percentage points. Um. I do wanna point out this gross RX claims to total net claims. Um, pharmacy costs run at about twenty percent of overall claims. That's up from where it was in two thousand twenty-four at fourteen point nine. But although that's still below our, our book of business average at twenty-five and a half. Um, there is a little bit of concern that it's tweaked up five percentage points um uh from twenty-four to twenty-five. I, 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 um, all of this translates to, had we um. If we do nothing, uh we were projecting eleven point five seven percent increase. The district budget six percent. Um, all these numbers on here are just the actuarial um calculations behind the numbers. But at the end of the day, um staying status quo would have meant uh just under twelve percent um increase. To the budget, not to spend. So with that said, um. We uh went to work and said, hey, what do we do to keep within the strategic plan we created three years ago? Um. Procuring healthcare costs at the lowest possible um point that we can. Providing um quality access to benefits so that you're still competitive both from a benefit design perspective. And um an employee contribution perspective. So what we're proposing is um a dual choice option plan. Uh, Jason and I had met with Mercy Health um about a month ago. And although the direct contract we negotiated with them is on par with the biggest payers that they contract with. There is a way to, to procure um care through Mercy. Um, at a much lower cost point is, and that is to um. Uh, directly contract with their Mer- Mercy Care HMO organization. So option one would be. Um, going back to a, a fully insured plan with Mercy. Only, no out of network benefits. You're either in, in network or there are no out of network benefits. The plan design would remain exactly as it is currently. And um members would have access to all of the Mercy uh facilities, Ford Healthcare and Watertown Regional Medical Center. As in-network providers. In addition to that, um, w- we are offer, we would offer a second option in, to your employees, so. They would say, I wanna be, I want the Mercy Care option, or I want the self-funded option. That would have Everpoint as the, the premier network and then a wrap network called Trilogy Health. That would be um provide benefits at a, a second tier level, so. Tier one benefits remain exactly as they are today and um members would have to go to Aurora or Children's. Tier two would allow people to go to a broader um uh choice of providers, including Freighter Pro Health. Um, and Ascension amongst some others, but those are the big systems. But if they chose to go there, they would play, pay a little bit higher in terms of deductible and out-of-pocket costs. The, the deductibles for tier one and two would cross satisfy or cross multiple, cross accumulate. Um, and then we would have traditional um out-of-network benefits for tier three with obviously much higher. Um, um deductibles and out-of-pocket costs. There will be no Amps advocacy, advocacy service available for, for this out-of-network tier. Um, if there, if uh is any balance billing or anything of that sort, it would be one hundred percent the member's responsibility. So. Um, that, that is the recommended um option for two thousand twenty-six. By doing that, um, we will be below, the projection is that we would be below. Um, the six percent budget um for the district. Do we want, go next slide?
Any questions on that or?
I don't know, have we, do we know the number of Mercy people? From Mercy employees and Aurora employees?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
We go to the next slide.
Do.
Oh, it's in the next slide.
We do, but we don't know how many of those Mercy employees will say, I want to do the Mercy Care.
Sure.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah.
Which is our, which then becomes that is in line or even slightly better than the Everpoint Elite Network.
Yeah.
And our best pricing option.
Yeah.
But it is structured to incentivize, you know, if you're going with the, the lowest cost to our plan. Then it's incentivizing you're paying less out of pocket or in that premium. If you're gonna go to that next tier, the Everpoint Elite and so forth, which is still really good pricing structure for us, you're going to pay. Slightly more than the Mercy Care be, in the premium, the monthly premium contribution. But your co-pays, your deductibles will remain the same. If you're gonna go to that. Uh, Trilogy Network where you can pretty much go to.
Yeah.
Any of those other providers, that's more costly to the plan, so you're going to, you can do it, but you're gonna have higher expenses.
Yeah.
And, and we do know that about eighty-five percent of the total spend goes to Everpoint. Predominantly Aurora um and Mercy and about seventy, a little over seventy percent of that. Total spend is going to um the Everpoint Elite or Aurora Network. So this slide just shows the employee contribution, so. If a member chooses Mercy Care, which is the bottom left, so the top is current um funding, employee contributions. And district cost. The bottom left is if somebody chooses Mercy Care. They would actually have a ten percent reduction in terms of what their current payroll deductions are. The middle column, eighty-seven, ninety, one seventy-two, fifty-eight and two oh three forty. If somebody chooses the self-funded option, they're gonna get a ten percent increase in what their current employee contributions are. Which are a hundred and seven, seven forty-four, two-ten and two forty-eight. Now, the next slide, actually, um, we do the largest benchmarking study in the country. Um, we've shared this at multiple occa- occasions with the insurance committee, we use this in our, our strategic planning. But what this says is currently in two thousand twenty-five. Um, and these are rounded to the nearest dollar, just so you're aware here. Um. Your current plan uh for single coverage, employees spend ninety-eight dollars per month, which is down both, you know, the blue line. The average Wisconsin public school in the database um spends a hundred and thirteen for a hi- high deductible plan. And then for family, um, y- your staff currently spends two hundred and twenty-six dollars a month. And the average Wisconsin public school spends two seventy-two. So even with the um, the ten percent increase for the, the self-funded plan. You know, they would be at a hundred and seven dollars um in change, but it would round to a hundred and seven. And family would be at two forty-eight, so even with your highest cost plan, you will be lo- below and very competitive. With um the average school district. And that's comparing your two thousand twenty-six rates to the, the benchmarking twenty-five will have new numbers. Sometime in uh May of next year, um but I can be um. Ninety-nine point nine percent certain that what you see for the, the benchmark districts will be higher than what you see on this slide. So you, you'll remain very competitive. Now, the next slide, um, um. To address what we talked about with the pharmacy, the percentage of overall costs going up. Uh, we are proposing adding a couple of plans. The first one will not be available until. Probably second quarter of next year. Um, but there's a little known um federally funded program called three forty B. Which allows um eligible healthcare providers, in essence, systems to procure. Uh, prescription medications at a significantly reduced price. Um, Drexie, your current pharmacy benefit manager, will be partnering with some of those providers. That will allow members to, to pro- receive certain medications. Over seven hundred and fifty dollars per script to be filled through this program. Um, it saves the district money and it saves the members money. Um, and there's reasonably significant savings associated with that, somewhere north of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is the projection. The second program, um, which we would target um first quarter of next year is an international. Uh, program that allows drugs um on a voluntary basis. And it's a, it's a limited list, but it's a pretty significant list to be purchased in. Predominantly Canada, but some of them would be procured in um countries like New Zealand and Australia. Um, but again, it saves the, the actual net cost of the drug is lower to the member and the district. And it's, it's actually no cost again to the member if somebody voluntarily wants to um source their medication internationally. That also has significant savings. There is some crossover here. Um, but the combination of the two should be somewhere depending on um. The number of people that take advantage of international sourcing, so that would be a choice. The three forty B program would not be a choice. Um. We're expecting somewhere between four and five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Just a question on the prescription plan. Is that only for option two? Folks?
Yes, it's, it's only for the self-funded plan. The Mercy Care Plan partners with Mavitus. And we're um limited to whatever programs they have in, in. E- embedded in the, the health plan. And neither of these would be part of that.
Uh, it, it's a very good question and something that we'll wanna have conversations with staff. Because they might think, well, I can save twenty bucks a month if I do the Mercy Care.
Yeah.
But if they're on one of those prescription lists.
Yeah.
That can be sourced internationally, which is fifteen hundred a month, which means you're gonna hit your deductible. You know, within three months, but you can get it for zero dollars and we can save much more. We're better off than going with tier two.
Yeah.
And international sourcing or doing the three forty B.
So it'll be up to the individual to really look at what prescriptions they're on, how much are those?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Although we will be, the, the people that qualify or have prescriptions that currently qualify for three forty B. Or in an international sourcing, they'll be contacted direct Scott by Drexie or by ourselves.
Okay.
And like, I know I have one that I'm eligible for international sourcing, so I'm like, yeah, set it up, I'll take the connect version.
Yeah.
And um.
So, so. The, the only, the only caveat to that, Jason, is the three forty B program because it was delayed until second quarter. That won't happen prior to people having to make a choice during opening.
Oh, how will they choose that then? It would be the first year.
Yeah, the first year, they, they in essence won't be able to pick a plan based on how the pharmacy benefits are paid.
Okay.
Generally, the, the first question to step and read to ask themselves is, are they okay going to. With option one and only having care through Mercy or Watertown?
Yeah.
If they go to providers other than that and they're not willing to switch.
Right.
Option two is, is what's best for them.
Right.
Now, if the employee is going, I don't care where I go, I'm trying to make my dollar, dollar go the farthest. And you're willing to consider a more limited network, Mercy Care is the best option for you.
Um, Scott, on the Mercy Care, do they. Uh, have coverage, like say they're out of town and they get sick or they get in an accident, they need to go to the emergency room. Do they have coverage through the emergency room?
Yes, um ACA requires that emergency room is covered the same in or out of network, so that, that wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, right.
Yep. And in, you know, we looked at um back in two thousand twenty-three as an op- And in, you know, we looked at um back in two thousand twenty-three as an option, um just having Mercy Care. Um, that clearly was the lowest cost option.
Right.
But clearly, that presents some problems based on geography and where people live, et cetera. So that that is not an option. We, the fundamental, you know, you you are, you are actually doing better than the nation at large with a nine and a half percent medical trend throughout, you know, nationally. Um, and our objective is to mitigate the the abrasion that was um received by, I would say, a a limited number of staff, but when I say limited, I use that term loosely, um with the balance billing associated with the reference-based pricing. On top of that, the amount of time, energy, and effort that has been put in by, in particular, um Taylor has been significant. And you know, we wanna improve things and keep the momentum going, but minimize the abrasion and enhance the the um uh the the cost opportunities.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I personally, I think this is great that employees have a choice, you know, and that I I really like that. So. And if we can keep our costs below that six percent, that's even better. So.
You want to just mention, so the board's aware of how quickly it gets us rolled out and people sign up?
Yeah.
Yes, no, absolutely. We have a big task in front of us where we need to have all employees making a choice. Either they want health insurance, and if so, what's option one, option two to them? They don't want health insurance, they're throwing off that cash and move form, and we need everyone to make a choice during this coming Monday. So we can turn this around and have all um care ready to go January first, in case someone does need to go to the doctor right away in the new year. Oh, boy. So we're we're ready. We kind of, we have.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And and you're not due before Monday, right?
Okay, any other questions? Anything that we can, if Scott and I can answer?
Nice piece of work.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, looking for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the health insurance proposal as presented.
I'll second.
All right, so I'm moving second to approve the health insurance proposal. Uh, roll call, both please.
Mr. Andre.
Yep.
Eric Gordon.
Yes.
This is Ingersoll.
Yes.
This is Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Skiro.
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Griebing.
Yes.
Ms. Karkowski.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Always. Okay, moving on to our student representative report.
All right, so again, starting with the high school this week, uh about two weeks ago, Wednesday, we had our Halloween night. And well, it's a lot of fun. We had a lot of kids come, mainly run by the student council, but uh a lot of the other clubs join in and they bring fun little events and games and like tattoos and face painting to it. So it's a lot of fun, and it's great to see all like the elementary school kids coming. Just enjoy it. And then um we also had EHS, I mean, Skills USA started competition season November third at the Littoral High School. Um, and it had a competition. We don't exactly know where that went, but lots of medals there, so it looks like it went pretty well. Um, EHS Boy Swim is a lot of startup, and they had some fundraisers at Kidova and Noodles and Company, so thanks to those two companies. And then finally, uh Sam Ford was selected to be the Wisconsin State Honors Band. It's really cool.
All right, and then over at the middle school, the seventh grade youth football was the one that their Super Bowl. Little game, and then also. And then um a couple of things we've been seeing around the school is the new seven group that's opening up in Delve and has been going around and delivering stuff to各个 schools. Just something I really like to see. Then also, the seventh and eighth grade bands took a walk over the high school. And then Miss Wiki and her um symphonic band and winter ensemble performed a Halloween concert for the middle school students that they were all able to observe.
Fun.
And also, the Elkhorn area middle school builders club is coming together to fight hunger in the community. And essentially, they're putting together a bunch of donated food in the mealboxes and delivering them to the Elkhorn Food Pantry right in town. And collecting these donations from now all the way until December fifteenth.
So I'll add the seventh grade, they're the first Elkhorn Youth Football Team to win a playoff game in the CPO League, and the first to to win the Super Bowl. Their first year of tackle football was third grade. So we're relatively young, where most of the other programs started in first grade and second grade, so there's a gap there. My biggest disappointment is I don't get to complain anymore that every year we pay the fee for the trophies and the medals, but we know we're never gonna get one, so. Yeah, so congrats. That was a a big accomplishment for for them, yeah.
Okay, so at Jackson, Jackson, they had a fall party um in one of the afternoons, and students made sure to get their fudges in during science. Uh, fifth graders spent the week growing alfalfa sprouts to watch photosynthesis in action. On Halloween, the second graders played pumpkin buckets, scarecrow throw, wrapped the mummy, and made some creepy crafts. They also did a project called Wrapped Up in a Book, where they talked about their favorite book at the moment and used mummy decorations.
And on Halloween, Mrs. Lyons, I believe it was, um came in to read to a couple of the students and share some of her witch stories, all dressed up. And then also that week, the Elkhorn firefighters came to the school and taught about fire safety and allowed some of the students to see the equipment and all the different types of gear. And then Mrs. Springer's second grade class had also turned some of their artwork into some different three D prints.
At West Side, they had a Halloween dress-up week, such as Jersey Day and Pajama Day were included. They also had special treats from the lunch ladies on Halloween. And then PTA fundraiser at Callers coming up uh happened, and then Seven Drew did their delivery to West Side also.
Yeah, they actually delivered to all the
Wow.
schools, I believe. I don't know how they had that much ice on hand, but that was a lot of ice coffee they brought.
And then at CCA, we're seeing some of the students help out at Camp Timberly by carving a bunch of different pumpkins for somebody's family events. And then also something that um my principal at CCA shared with us is that seventy-seven percent of CCA kids are teaching college coursework um just in semester one, so that's something she was really proud of and wanted to share with us. Then the Elkhorn um CCA Youth Build Group actually celebrated giving the keys to the family that they built an entire home for, and so they moved that over through their um
Yeah, it's a very, yeah.
Yeah, through their project with um Habitat for Humanity. And then they also were able to go to the Lake Lauter Zoo and learn about a bunch of different career paths with it.
So at Options, the sixth grade English students were practicing writing sensory details while in the woods. And then also there, they had the Camp Timberly with the hosting the pumpkin walk on the path, and a lot of Options students carved pumpkins for the path, and then they also got a free ticket to attend the event and try to find their pumpkins.
And then a couple of things going in around the district, the whole seven group delivery, a lot of the staff is talking about that, that was my scene. Then also the equestrian team, which we heard about last meeting, they ended up finishing fifth um at state and brought them the Spirit Award.
Nice.
And also, the district celebrated the psychologist staff members or National School of Psychology Week. And then along with winter sports coming in this week at the high school, they also had a gymnastics kids camp that was opened, having um allowing kids to come and spend the day with high school gymnasts and try all of the different events for fifteen dollars to try and help raise that money for the kids' work. And that's it for this week.
Great.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. All right, uh we're gonna move on to talking about the Director of Strategic Partnership position.
So you may have seen in the news that Mr. Frardier um resigned and uh ended a position of end um Silverlake as their superintendent, which we're very sad to see him go, but very happy for him and his opportunity that he has to go over there. And then he's also uh will continue to work with us um somewhere in Emilyland or or Bill as we make that transition, so he's not leaning this high and dry. He'll keep uh, you know, things moving forward in those plates spinning until we uh move forward in the whatever, you know, that direction is. Uh, what I wanted to do is is share with you before we go and post for that position, because it is a unique um position. It is a position that's fully paid for out of our funding eating community service program. Um, this is just an outline, not a comprehensive job description of it, but an outline of the work that the Director of Strategic Partnerships do or does, and then I um pleased to have Chris here so that you can ask him any questions. And um what I'm looking for, that discussion around what the board would like to see moving forward, so that we can then note to post for it. And um I don't know, I maybe the best thing to do is to turn it over to Chris. I know he's presented on that position. Is there you have some pieces that you would speak to, Chris, and any recommendations that you would share with the the board to to kick the discussion?
I I think, you know, you look at, I kinda did this quick summary, one page in front of you, and you can see I worked with Taylor uh last April to put together the job description. Cause ultimately, we've kind of created this, developed this over the last four or five years. And I think the one thing I that really like just is loud and clear, as I would just share and inform the board, um I was on a meeting with the W with with the MMAC last week, that's the Metro Milwaukee Area Chamber, and and they're the center for the United, the state of Wisconsin is divided up into economic development groups, regions. And Milwaukee and Walworth County, Milwaukee, their, ours is the M seven. It's Milwaukee County plus the six surrounding it. And we were fortunate enough through M seven, and I think you were there to see Julia, the um student presentations with Advocate Aurora.
Yes.
So those dollars came from the MMAC through the Basiris Foundation, which is out of South Milwaukee. Um, and we were the only s- school district uh chosen for Walworth County. And in that discussion, I was giving them feedback after talking to the kids, and one of the things that our point of contact said to District C, who's the company that has the develops the connections to launch the, I don't know, curriculum and training for the for the teachers, said, you're not gonna find a school district around the state of Wisconsin that has better and more authentic relationships with their employers and economic development organizations. And I think that that was a strong statement about the opportunities that come with those relationships. And I I think um it's a lot of work, it's a lot of conversations, it's a lot of handshakes, it's a lot of follow-up. It feels sometimes like a quasi-sales position in a sense, because you're making sure that you're uh continuing to authenticate and validate those relationships. But I think from that comes incredible opportunities for our kids. Uh, when I I shared it with some of my network around Southeast Wisconsin, I had experienced people who I leaned in my first couple of years saying, when are they posting it? When are they posting it? I mean, it's been, it's been, I I've met with, I I know right now, I lead, I'm, well, they said they were, we'll see, three people who are incredibly talented uh professionals who have great deep connections, who are like super excited about carrying, carrying on the torch. So I think it's a testament to the board, to the community, to the county, um and to the work we've all done together to kind of really forge this unique experience and professional opportunity for people. So and like, I'll give you another example, we we launched Craftsman with Character, which um last year, we had six employers, this year we're at twelve. I mean, they're just knocking down the door. So I I just, I don't know what that ROI is, but I it it's gotta be high, I think, from a community relationship piece to a support to investment, so.
Yeah.
We also keep in mind that last year, we had Mike Dolly, who was in a position that really focused on that support from the high school. That was a position that we did collapse.
Right.
We spread out and the high school team um divvied up those duties all the way up through Mrs. Bosch, and I can you know, share that as a really specific individuals, as we have it as a gem item in close, but my recommendation would be that in order to continue this work, continue these partnerships, I don't have a solution where I could say, yep, we can pick this up, you know, drop that position and and continue that that bandwidth and spread it around. Uh, my recommendation would be that we post for the position both internally and externally, and go through that process and look at the individuals who apply. And then we can make a determination there based on the skill set, what credentials they have, because there are certain certifications that fill certain niches and roles as well. But then after we see what that applicant pool is like, we could tweak, adjust, or cater that, what that final position looks like.
Sure.
Um, at that point, but I would, that would be my recommendation moving forward if we wanna continue on that that word. And from a budgetary, operational budget
Right.
component, there's no savings from reducing that. In fact, I would make the strong argument that we would probably have a net loss, because we would lose out on revenues being brought in through other grants and opportunities.
And I I believe we have students.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, very well.
Um, I'm a hundred percent on board with continuing this position. Um, and Chris, I I do feel like we as a board need to thank you for the way you have um really, you pioneered and grew this position, you know, you we gave you this opportunity to grow it, and and you did it beyond expectation, I think. Um, so thank you for what you did to, you know, grow that position and grow our relationships with businesses. I think this, that's exactly what businesses want, um is to have partnerships with uh the school district, because it gives them high-quality opportunities to develop their next employees. Um, and and I think we've seen that repeatedly with many of these businesses, they're hiring these kids right out of high school or giving them opportunities to go to college and paying for them to go to college and then bringing them back in to their to their businesses. So um the opportunities that it's created for our students, I think, is tremendous. Um, so thank you for your role in that. Um one thing, I've had a conversation uh recently with um Ms. Card um and how we might incorporate some things at the middle school too, and I'm wondering if that's, can that be um something that we incorporate into this position is starting, because, I mean, she herself has has started building relationships with um some some businesses in the area. Um, and I think that there's some opportunities there to have some partnerships with the STEAM education at at the middle school as well. So I'd like to, if, you know, in that job description, I'd like to incorporate some things, you know, to create opportunities at the middle school as well.
I think so, and and part of our discussion that we've had with our business leaders as well, and at the high school levels, we need our uh and we do the academic who are planning at the middle school, but I think even creating or expanding some of those opportunities for the kids, they, because what we're finding, I think, you know, at that high school level, feedback from the school councils at the high school, that going through their freshman year, kind of exploratory, and then getting into that sophomore, junior, is almost a little bit late, they'd like them to come in.
Yes.
You know, not that all of them are gonna have a strong idea of what they'd like to do, but there's opportunities for them to take advantage of that they, if they had a little bit better idea going in as freshmen.
Just exposure to um opportunities, you know, it doesn't have to be a full-on youth apprenticeship, but just exposure to other opportunities, career opportunities.
Yeah, our mid, our middle school's been, last couple of years, attending where we have a membership with the Waukesha County Business Alliance, so they attend their um uh their health Uh their Health Careers Fair in March and then they. Also attend the uh they have a like a construction manufacturing experience. Uh they've been going last couple of years, two buses full to uh Build My Future. So they've been been in attendance there and then Biz Town, all sixth graders have been going. Brian was really supportive of that, so. Trying to integrate some of that, but not at the scale I think we could. Cause I really think it should be for all kids.
Is there a particular, I'm obviously, you created the job and. And a person that comes in is going to have to work through things, but is there a particular skill set a person should have coming into it?
I can speak to that if, I mean, I.
Really hold to someone having experience with similar. With a, in a similar position, I think this is one of those positions where you can really draw in some. Real talent. Um I think the other thing is. They have to be able to communicate effectively. Uh uh you. I I I'm not correlating it to my. Gonna be position, but it was interesting, I was in front of the board in my new position and the one of the board members said. You you s- when you were talking about some educational initiatives, you put it in the layman's terms. I I only do that because every time we're with an employer, I can't, I can't talk like educators talk, right? Because you have to walk, because they're like, what? You have to walk in and then have a conversation with them about. You know, have, understanding like you're here to support them. And but also like finding that common ground on why. Why schools can be a integral part of their. Uh talent acquisition strategy or their partnership, you know, you have to be able to understand the a purposeful why for them. Without pushing it down their throat.
And I think that takes somebody who understands and can speak. Uh of business persons, uh from a business person's pers- perspective, you know, um. I I think certainly you need to have an educational background, but I think the ability to uh, like you said. Correlate that to how. This partnership supports that business person and speak their language.
Dan may have a comment about what I'm about to say sarcastically and appropriately, but you really have to become a really good listener with them.
No, but it, but I think. Also, you've gotta be able to help sell a a vision and 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 communicate because you're dealing with. Employers who I need fifteen employees now. So when you're talking to them, yeah, but we need you to invest in our middle school development, our high school. So that you're creating a a pipeline that's, they're not gonna get dividends on for years to come. So helping bridge that that gap and that understanding is is critical.
I I think the one thing that I've had a an extra special gift, you know, ability to do is just understand the educational process and. What the high school was doing, so when parents would call, you talk about, but I think the other thing where I was going with, rather than say is. I think people have to understand that it's not, you're not. Employers are not on your schedule, you're on theirs. And that doesn't, that that means you're you're. You're. You have to be available when they're available. Yeah, and for some, for some people, that may not be. Extremely convenient. I mean.
Yep, uh that a hundred percent, as as an employer who has worked through that with. At the middle school level, it's, that is a hundred percent correct.
Yeah, like we're finishing, we like, we're working with Adam's power to finish up the electric at the pavilion. You know, people ask, well, I thought it was gonna be done in September, well. I I'm sure they wanted it done, but you know, they're also running a for-profit business that. This is not their top priority. Maybe yours.
Yeah, any other comments or questions that anybody else will. Talk more specifically. Yeah, wonderful, thank you very much. And best of luck to you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Julie, I I second everything you said about about Chris earlier, awesome job, man, and and good luck with everything that you're doing.
Thanks. I told Jason I get the now, speaking of public comments, doesn't open a roll family, that'll be fun.
And so we might have to change that policy.
You get three minutes like anybody else. Okay, um moving on to our personnel recommendations.
Right, we have our recommendations there, I wanna give a big thank you to Chris for his years of service and. Uh dedication to the school district and I think he can uh go into his next position. I'm proud of the the great work and transformational work that he's helped to lead here in Elkhorn. Um and you know, I personally wanna thank him too for trusting me as a leader to to. Leave Wellmott and come over to us thirteen years ago to um take that leap, so thank you, Chris. Also wanna thank Elaine Dobrats for all of her years of service, Elaine did recently retire and. Um gave the district many years of service and teaching uh German and um wanna. Thank her for all those years and her efforts. Then we have the resignation of Caitlin Freitag and Matthew. Hager, uh Aaron Taylor from the Wrestling Assistant Coach. Aaron Alowski uh has been, was selected to serve as the next Middle School Associate Principal. Um Courtney Correio is is. Uh going to serve as a volleyball assistant coach and Tom. Bingleinger as a high school boys swim coach, should I mispronounce that one? We are looking for a couple uh high school wrestling coaches still with uh. You know, anyone, put the the word out, Dan might come out of retirement, I don't know.
Too many scars.
So, um yeah, they're getting really desperate when they're asking Dan and myself to come. Out of retirement to to help with that, so I might be driving kids around, but I I can't. Next of the daily days, but. So if you know of anyone, we we need, we're looking for two high school assistant coaches still.
So our new associate principal, can you offer any background on her?
Uh she's coming to us from Brussels um school in the West OSHA school district. Um comes to us with seventh grade um experience in E L A. Um really excited to join us, she was already moving stuff into her office um at night.
She's everybody's number one?
Everyone's number one. Or the entire committee that we had there, we had about ten of us, I think that was there that night. Um and it was everyone's. So, um yeah, she's, she'll start the nineteenth then.
Alright, looking for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for November tenth, twenty twenty five, including new employment contracts, conditions on. Passing the background check and district managed drug screening as presented.
There a second? So moved in second to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for November tenth, twenty twenty five, including new employment contracts, condition upon passing the background check and district mandated drugs. Uh roll call vote please.
Mr. Andre. Eric Gordon.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll. Mrs. Costa. Uh Mr. Scarrow. Mrs. Vaughn. Mr. Greedy. And Ms. Krikowski.
Alright. And it looks like we have a couple of uh school gifts to present.
Yes, we have. Uh the. Thank you, the Columbia, the same patchery council has donated five hundred dollars to the Options Music Program. The Elkhorn Soccer Club has donated snacks for a snack in the pack valued at a hundred dollars.
I moved to accept these generous school gifts as presented.
Seconded to accept the generous school gifts.
Columbus. You have the only male version and then the.
Alright, so moved in second to accept the generous school gifts, uh roll call vote please.
Mr. Andre. Eric Gordon. Mrs. Ingersoll. Mrs. Costa. Mr. Scarrow. Mrs. Vaughn. Mr. Greedy. Ms. Krikowski.
Alright, uh. Yeah, we would like to um. Uh move the date of our December board meeting, typically it's. In December, we just have one, um the second week uh was bad for. Myself, for um Mr. Tyler and several, there was something else going on, right, like.
That, and it's also because it's that second week, it would have given us.
Oh, yeah, it was gonna be five weeks between that meeting and the next January meeting, so we felt like that was too long. So Mr. Tyler and I discussed it and and we would like to propose moving the one board meeting uh to the fifteenth rather than the eighth. Does that work? For everybody?
And that would be the only one for December. Where, does it conflict with any uh school programming?
Yeah, I didn't check on that.
Cause I know that is busy time for.
Calendar, a calendar we can talk. Uh I moved to approve holding the December school board meeting on the fifteenth of December as presented. Is there a second? Okay, so moved in second in to approve the holding the school board meeting uh on the fifteenth, Jan- or December fifteenth. Um roll call vote please.
Mr. Andre. Eric Gordon. Mrs. Ingersoll. Mrs. Housestock. Mr. Scarrow. Mrs. Vaughn. Mr. Greedy. And Ms. Krikowski.
Alright, and then Mr. Tyler, give us my announces.
Uh the first legislative committee meeting will be scheduled for Monday, the twenty fourth, immediately following the regular school board meeting that evening. And then the school board election, the incumbents are Heather Reckles and Adam Andre. Um it's always a good idea to publicly declare whether you'd like to run for reelection. Elkhorn residents interested in running for the school board should contact Johnny Esman in the district office for a packet of materials. And then that's all I had for announcements.
Joseph and the Amazing. Code is uh seven P M on Friday and Saturday. Um there's a link in uh the board notes if you would like to purchase tickets. Um I had uh. Mrs. Esman uh add that because I was personally looking to buy tickets and it is nowhere on the school website, so. You have to go to the Facebook page to find a link to buy them, so um anyway.
Alright, we'll look to get that up on the website too.
Alright, um looking for a motion to uh.
I move to adjourn.
Uh you have to read what's in there. Yeah, on the. At the bottom of the agenda.
It's there, it's up on the screen.
I move to adjourn, contemplate closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute. Nineteen point eight five, one C to discuss a personnel matter. And the school board will not reconvene in order in open session.
I'll second.
So moved in second to adjourn to contemplated closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five. Parent one, parent C to discuss a personnel matter, the school board will not reconvene in open session, roll call vote please.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Eric Gordon. Mrs. Ingersoll. Mrs. Costa. Mr. Scarrow. Mrs. Vaughn. Mr. Greedy. Ms. Krikowski.
Alright. Thank you very much, everybody, thanks for being here. We'll just take us.
I'll be around.